That it is seven forty-seven. And for those who are just seeing us here live now, we just attended a training with the MASC that was led by Ms. Warmer. Is that how you say her last name? I didn't get Ms.
Warner, Dr. Warner.
Warner. And she has her own business directed around equity and diversity. She also once worked for Brookline as their diversity officer or director. So it was interesting. We got to ask some questions, but it was mostly listening. So we're here to process what we heard. So I think Mary Beth has a traditional reflection type of an exercise that we could start out with and then go from there.
So what I was going to offer, there's a kind of a basic strategy for processing new information or something that you've heard, which is called a triangle circle square processing. So it's first kind of going around and talking about what's a question that's circling in your mind based on what you just heard. So we could do a kind of round robin on that. And then what is something that you heard in the conversation that squares with your beliefs? So that's the square, those circles square. And then the third point are what are really three points that you're going to remember from that presentation? So maybe a good way to start is to just go around and start with what questions are circling in your mind. So anybody want to start with that? Peter, what have you got?
I I plan on reaching out to Dr. Warner. I was going to, I was going to write it in the text, but it's just so hard to type in the text on an iPad. But I really want her thoughts about if a proper learning management system can help close the equity gap. Because I was recently speaking with a superintendent, an assistant superintendent of a nearby district. And they recognized in March, they said exactly what I was saying. They were listening to the school committee meetings. I don't know if I inspired this superintendent, but they immediately went out and invested in a learning management system for under fifty thousand dollars that does everything that we're trying to do. Like, for instance, it creates a baseball card stat sheet for every student. It helps identify equity issues. It helps check to see if the curriculum is a mirror. It helps differentiate instruction. It ensures every teacher is consistent along across all classes. So I wanted to see if she has experience with learning management systems, closing that equity gap.
So so what are the questions that circulate in your mind is what is the connections here between some of what you heard and a potential learning management system?
Right, I mean, that's just one part of it. You know, that's, it's a system that can help identify it. Obviously, we have the people issue too, but.
Good. Anybody want to go next in terms of a question that's circling around your mind?
I I I think the question that comes to my mind after sort of seeing this, something that Dr. Wardman said, and then something I had noticed that Michelle happened to write at the in the chat at the end is is how to convince our district how necessary this is. Right, it's not what can we get out of it? It it's it's trying to make sure that when, you know, we get it in here, that people are showing up and they're actually coming in with open ears and open hearts and open minds.
Good. Thanks, David. Dana, question, oh, Anna, question that's circling around your mind?
Yes, thanks, Mary Beth. I think my biggest questions are what are the financial and operational limitations to execute elements of this work and how quickly can we get it going?
Good, thanks. Julia?
Yes, just I have a lot of, I have a lot of notes, more thoughts, but my question is based on the, based on the video and what I know about non racism and anti racism. It is about action. So what do we need to do to op- operationalize this work? And what are the steps needed to take? And how much is that going to cost? And what does that look like?
Shell?
Is it the cart before the horse? I I'm wondering what comes first? We need this, but is it part of our strategic plan? I mean, I think to what David was saying, how do we get everybody to embrace this? Is this before our strategic plan or is it part of our strategic plan? So that's my main thing because it is needed. But again, how do we incorporate that with our strategic plan? And where does it, where does it fit?
Dana, Michelle, Dana?
So it's interesting. I love hearing these questions because I interpreted that really differently. Like, I, I think slowed way down, like, I'm really at, like, I interpreted that. But I love that everybody's questions were so different than mine. I really was at a place where I really am feeling like, wow, I really need to understand better, more deeply about cultural proficiency and what that really looks like. You know, and so I was really more at a sort of a coming away from that just as a person. Like, I really want to more deeply understand what that really looks like in a. So that's my question, which is, I'm, I'm loving that, like, people are already, like, operationalizing. And I'm really still back there trying to just grasp it. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm the thing that I'm, the question that's rolling around in my mind is kind of like the one that I put in the chat that didn't really get answered. Is what is the work for us? Because many of our children aren't exposed to people that are very different from them. We live in a community that's mostly homogeneous. And so how do we take that and provide them with the skills to enter a world that's not homogeneous? So it's like, it's like, what is the work that we want to do? Is the question.
Great, thanks, Michelle. And for me, one of the things that's circling around in my mind is how does this fit with the other work of the district? Is this in fact, not even work of the district, but part of who we are as a district? And and just trying to figure out how this fits into an overall vision and clarity around goals for the district is clearly important. But what does that look like? And, you know, is it a strategy? Is it a culture? You know, just a lot of questions related to that. Julia?
Okay, I just had one more thing. I actually love what Dana said because I do think it's my tendency to just jump into, let's do it, let like, let's make it to do list, let's make a project plan. But I agree, I think that I actually don't know what cultural proficiency looks like for the district. So I, I love that. I'm just thinking about my notes, but I think that is a question. I think we, we definitely need to step back and think about what does educational equity look like? What does cultural proficiency look like? And what, you know, these, these very important strategies on the high level, what do they look like? So I I tend to just kind of jump into wanting to oper- operationalize things. But I did like Dana's question. I think even stepping back and talking about it a little bit could be helpful.
All right, why don't we move on to what squares with our beliefs? And with your permission, I'll, I'll share kind of my thinking around that. One of the things that she talked about, just in terms, you know, talked about the difference between equity and equality. And a lot of times you, you also hear the phrase that fear is and everybody gets the same thing. Fear is people get what they need. And, you know, in my career as an educator, there was a moment, you know, there are a couple moments that have stood out. And one was some work with junior grade books. And the way junior grade books work is they have texts that are purposely pretty thought provoking. And but they, they give all kids access, but in that there's a recording of the, the story. So kids can read it, but then the whole class actually hears it so that everybody kind of enters the discussion. So if you have, if you're a kid that has a need in special education, in special education and can't access the text, you've got to hear the ideas in the story. And I, I remember, I think it was like in fifth grade and we were doing a conversation and there was a student that was a special education student. And it was clear in the class that everyone had somewhat dismissed this child as, oh, you're special education. You're, you're not as bright as us or whatever else. And in this moment, because access to the text was, there was, there was, there was things that were put into place for the student. The level of thinking that the student showed was far and above anybody else's processing of the text. And it was pretty powerful to see, you know, when we thought about what do you need in order to access the learning and that was provides the student. And I remember watching the class, like, wow, that was really amazing thinking. And so part of that idea of that, you know, fair is an equal, that people get what they need in order to access the learning. And that, that's an experience that really sat with me and that really resonated with me as I, as I heard the doctor speak. So anybody else, something that squared with your beliefs?
I'll go.
Yeah, Michelle?
I thought when she talked about the implicit bias is something that you have to do and it's your personal responsibility. It, it really does square with my beliefs. We have a cultural diversity group that participated in that ECLC that Hamilton London is in. And they led some book groups last year, in the spring and summer. And it was, it's only when you do, do something that challenges your belief systems that you can actually change. And so you can't force change on other people. You can only provide sort of like the vehicle, the safe space to do that sort of work. So I thought that was, you know, a, a good thing, like, you know, those, you can't change those who aren't ready to change or willing to change or don't see the need to change.
Great. Somebody else, something that you heard that squares with your beliefs? Dana?
Yeah, so I, it's funny because I have, I have seen that slide before about equality versus equity. But for me, it just, and this is just very personal that I, when I work with parents, it's often a conversation about what about between their own children? Like, I go through this with parents about their own children that, like, your children don't necessarily need everything to be exactly the same because they have different needs and they're different children. And I really kind of had like an aha moment, like, I was like, oh, right, of course. I actually spend a lot of time with parents talking about, like, I just hadn't, even though those two things were in my, you know, world, I really had never sort of made that connection. Like, that's, this is just expanding this out to the whole world that, like, you cannot treat your own individual children just the same because everybody has different, comes from a different place. And yet it is something that we all struggle with. Parents struggle with that even in their own home. Well, it's not fair, right? If, you know, whenever I have to tell this one four times to brush their teeth and the other one does it the first time, well, they're different kids. So that just hit home for me.
Anna?
Thanks, Mary Beth. Well, for me, it had lots of squares. I mean, I think most people in the community and on the committee know that these are conversations that I spent the better part of my, my work and life working on and activism. And so it was validating for me in a lot of ways to just hear again that it really does start with those biases. I thought some of the graphics she shared were really validating that implicit biases at the top with microaggressions and you sort of work your way down. And so I think, and I think a couple of things that really squared out to me was the idea that the quickest way to equity is through cultural proficiency. So I think if we agree that equity is the goal, and I think it sounds like we do, you know, that cultural proficiency is important. But I think that, so, so that was just validating, you know, I've been pushing for this for a while and then part of these trainings, done these trainings. And I think it was really validating to just sort of feel like, right, we're, we're, we're on the right path. You know, this is like a good step. So that was helpful. I thought that she kept coming back to data was really important. And then if you look for patterns in your data, that that's a good roadblock. And I guess for me, it was sort of, again, squaring with some of what I've been saying too, is that we're, we're, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, she actually, I thought it was funny, she quoted Hillary Clinton back in twenty sixteen, you know, and that was when everyone's like, oh, wow, that's biased. Like, that's actually even later, like, so it was sort of validating to just, you know, have this training and their, the level of expertise, the number of professional resources that exist. So I guess for me, it was really validating to reinforce some of the things that I've been asking for and talking about. But also that it was, I thought helpful and that we as a district, even though it's newer to us, it's not actually new. And there are really well established paths and pattern, you know, access points into it. And I think it takes a little bit of pressure off of us to say, we don't actually have to figure this out all by ourselves. There are tons of professional resources and districts who have done this. So I think leveraging roadmaps was really helpful. The two kind of emotional things that picked up on, you know, for me were that when you talk about people having to do the work and why that's important and then sort of putting it into, you know, a majority white culture, that's actually sort of the point of some of this. Like, it's not the job of marginalized communities to teach us what we need to know. And I, this has come up in a lot of conversations in activism groups and different parts of where a lot of times you sort of approach diversity, this tokenism of like, well, someone tell me what I need to know. Or let's go, let's go look at the, you know, handful of minority students and have them tell us everything we need to know. It's like, that's, that was really validating to have her express, that's the inversion of the truth. And then in order for us to break down our own biases, it's, it starts from within. And it's, it's not the responsibility of marginalized people to solve injustice. It's on us. It's on us, the role of the oppressors to solve our own. We created the problem, so we have to solve the problem. Like, I think that was important. The last thing was really, really powerful and I think actually really important as we're coming into sort of this pandemic, out, coming out of the pandemic. And there's been a lot of conversation about the compounding of COVID with a resurgence of sort of racial awareness and injustice that everyone's gone through COVID. But if you're a minority student or marginalized in any way, you have the COVID trauma and then you have the rate, the injustice trauma. And it's like even heavier. And so one of the things she said is, you know, sort of equating psychological safety and emotional safety is the same as physical safety and sort of recognizing that if kids are feeling unsafe, it doesn't really matter how beautiful the learning plan is or how experienced the teacher is. If all they're thinking is, I'm being judged in this room, I don't feel safe in this room. I feel like other kids are making fun of me in this room. I don't know what they're saying about me. None of the other good work we're doing as a district is going to matter. So I thought that for me was really, really powerful to be reminded that physical safety and emotional safety are prerequisites for successful learning. So yeah, I thought it was great. I thought it was a great first step.
And that reminds me, there's Angela Myers, somebody that does a lot of different work. And one of the things that, that she says is that until you can capture their hearts, you don't have a shot at kids' minds, right? That, that, that piece is so important. Somebody that hasn't shared yet, Michelle?
Just that she said that being able to de-bias your brain, yourself is possible. And I know you mentioned that a little bit, you know, paying attention to yourself. I think that's encouraging because we think as adults, you know, we're always growing, but we think our education stops when we leave school. And any of us, we all have children. And when they get to be older, they are wonderful at showing you how biased you are, implicit and non-implicit. And I just think it's really important that there's, there's, you can't, we can change. And that's so important with everything that's going on now. And again, with the bottom line of helping our children so that they can be safe and they can feel welcome to learn. So I was hopeful to hear that. It was a good takeaway for me.
Julia?
Does someone else want to share that hasn't shared? That, well, the two, the two things that really squared with me. One, Michelle Bailey, you said this, complicate your exposure. I wrote that down. Lean into it. I think that is so important. If you notice that you have some kind of bias, or I, I mean, anything like a belief or you're thinking that you might want to learn something more or you might have some stereotypes and some myths and misconceptions. I absolutely love when she said complicate your exposure, like lean into it, get to know it. And the second thing, I re, I wrote it down, I highlighted it, we can't rely on people to be good people. That's not enough. So we, we know that hopefully people are good people. But what I also think is that we have this notion of racism. And actually, I watched the movie Salma with my daughter the other day. And, you know, it's such an over, the, not, I wouldn't say it's over the top. It all happened. But that, but she, that's what she thinks racism is. You know what I mean? It's sort of like what she sees in movies or what she reads in the news or what we talk about. And I have to say, no, it's not. There are things that happen every single day that are not this violence. It's not just, you know, saying the N word. I mean, there, there, there are, there's so much that happens that's racist that's not this. It's not what's portrayed in the movies. So I think, I, I love that, you know, we can't rely on people to be good people. That's not enough because sometimes people are good people, but maybe the policies are not the best. Or maybe there's, you know, there's discrimination going on behind the scenes. So I, I just think that I, I really like that she said that, you know, we just can't rely on, we just can't say, well, we're all kind of good people. So at the end of the day, you know, we don't need to do this work. So those were the two things that, that really squared with me.
David or Peter, anything you want to add in terms of what's squared with your beliefs?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind, I, I, I'm very blessed in that I get to sort of do these pretty regularly between my work with City Year and then my work within my own school, right? When I got hired over at Salem, we actually did implicit bias training as part of the onramping. And then we do it at least once a year as part of our regular training. You know, in, in, and every time you do this, you know, this, this wasn't really a training, right? It was, it was more of a, an introduction, right? And, and you can even tell because Dr. Wardman, you know, kept saying, like, oh, I want to go there, right? So she had this longer training that she was working her, off of her slides that she was deciding what to skip and what not to. And I just sort of wanted to, you know, like, oh, yeah, I can definitely go for the three hour version of this. Because I thought she was really, it was so funny because I actually logged in, this gets to this. I had to run Dante the baseball. So I logged in on my phone and it was like a, then you're too late. And she like starts out and she's got like all that energy. I'm like, oh, my God, why is she yelling at me? And then like, really going, I'm like, like, oh, like, she's got so much energy. This is so incredible. Because in, in, in like, you know, I don't think that I've ever seen her speak before. So it was really interesting just getting her perspective and I really wanted to meet her son. But like, the, I think for me, right, but something that was really important. And I was explaining it, like, as I explained to Dante earlier, because I had to drive him. Plus, you know, there was like an incident in his class yesterday. And then I was also talking to someone else from around town or like, oh, what are you doing? And I'm like, I have this implicit bias training and, and sort of explaining the difference between, you know, explicit racism and implicit bias, right? And then it's, it's a very, very, very big difference, right? I think in our district, you, you run into that, you know, roadblock that, that I said, a question I could, we'd be, we'd be having is like, oh, well, you know, why do we need this, right? Or how much of this community? But like, I, I think that's where that implicit bias sort of runs under the radar and, you know, can sort of end up being kindling for, at, at some point. It extracts racism, right? If it's not dealt with, you know, that you, you run that risk, right? I know that my middle school, my older middle schooler talks about like some of the members of her class and community that do, do use very unsavory language, we'll just call it that way. You know, and, you know, she stays away from them. But in, you know, and then she'll say stuff to them at the same time. And like, how much of that is this sort of, you know, adolescent acting out and not, you know, but like, where do we, as a community and as a school, need to sort of realize that that is happening, you know, and, and, and sort of take ownership of that? I, I think that, you know, even though we are, you know, predominantly white, upper middle class you know, community, we do have students on free and reduced lunch program. We do have, you know, people that aren't all, you know, Christian faith. We have, we do have these sub, subgroups within our community that, you know, do need to be addressed and, and that do need to be thought of from an educational standpoint, right? And so, you know, the simple idea of, you know, assigning homeworks or tests on Jewish holidays, things like that, right? So that's all part of implicit bias training. And, and so I think that's something that really, really, why we need to do this. I don't think, you know, we need to worry about how we're going to solve it. I think we just need to worry about how we're going to start, right? And, and then, and you just keep growing. Excuse me, but like that, just that I, you know, to sort of circle back to that idea of, you know, that there's a difference between extrinsic, extrinsic racism and intrinsic bias in that we have to realize, you know, what we're looking at here. It's very easy. We would not stand for a teacher in our district to be explicitly racist. They would be removed immediately. We can make our great teachers even better by helping them realize their intrinsic bias and making the, our educational programs more equitable for everyone in the community, you know? And so that's sort of where we are. And that just helped me sort of reiterate that. I love that I actually went through that with you guys today.
Thanks, David. Peter, you want to finish this off in terms of something that's squared with your beliefs?
No, I agree with everything that's been said. So no sense of, everything that's, I wanted to say has been said. I don't know who else has teaching experience, but I know Michelle and David would agree that this has been part of our lives. We've been learning, living and loving this for years now. This is, this is part of the fabric of teaching, for me, anyway. I've, I've, like I said, I've, I've been learning about this, living and loving it for years now. And yeah. That's it.
Great. Last part here, just to finish out kind of the processing of what we listened to this evening is the, what are three things, three points to remember? And again, I'll be happy to start off. One is that she, she started talking about the fact that we don't have schools full of teachers and students, but we have schoolfuls, a school full of learners. And I think really framing that for ourselves, that we're all learners, teachers are learners, administrators are learners, students are learners, that's, that's really important. She talked about, she started by talking about difficult conversations and then framed it around, well, really, they're necessary conversations. And I, I really took that point away. And then I, I also like the point that she made about the curriculum that, that students need to have both windows and, and mirrors. I, I thought that was a really helpful way of thinking about it. You know, in what ways does our, my instruction? In what ways does our, my instruction expand my world? And in what, and also in what ways do I see myself in that world? And I thought those were three, three key takeaways for me. Anybody want to go next?
Can I just say ditto? Those were my two takeaways.
Hey, Peter, there we go.
So her definition of educational equity, I took a screenshot of it. Said, educational equity means that every child receives whatever she, he, they need to develop his, her, their full academic and social potential and to thrive every day. And so, it's been about, probably 10 years ago, there was a lot of discussion about that special ed spending, that special ed spending. And I talked to, and someone in the meeting, the school committee meeting had said that parents just want this to all be, you know, a gold-plated education here in Hamilton, Wyndham. And, and this is, this was what I said to them, I said, no. What we want is an education that allows every child to reach their full academic potential and to be happy. And so to me, when we go to define equity, it's going to be more about that. It's going to be more about how do we treat all kids kindly and fairly? So that was my big take away from that. The other thing, she, I felt like she came right out of the gate saying what the school committee's responsibility was, was, or what the issues of this would be, is an unarticulated vision. And I was like, oh my God, she's talking to us. So like, she knows us, oh my gosh, she knows us. And then the last thing was, you know, I've been reflecting on, you know, I go, I go to First Church in Wyndham and our big thing is we have a wide open welcome. And what does that mean? And it means that literally, when they say everybody is welcome there, they literally mean it. There is no person who isn't allowed to be a leader, there's no person who isn't welcomed, there's no person who isn't loved. There is no person who isn't thought of and cared for. And so to me, it's, that's process. And moving a church from that is very deliberative, it's a long process. They have lots of community meetings and they get a lot of ideas. And ultimately, in the end, a church votes on whether or not they want to be open and affirming in that way. And some churches do vote and they're not really open and affirming. Other churches vote and they really live it. And so I'd like to see us do a process where we're really setting ourselves up to live it instead of just to say it. And that takes time and it takes community.
Thanks, Michelle. Other Michelle?
I took a screenshot of Ralph Ellison's quote, talking about cultural proficiency. You know, show me how I can cling to that which is real to me while at the same time teaching me a way into the larger society. Then and only then will I sing your praises and help you to make the desert bear fruit. And for me, that's, you know, what we need to do, you know, to, to Dr. Warnson, Warnham's presentation. So, reaching out.
Thanks, Michelle. Anna?
I think for me, the three biggest takeaways as a committee member. She started off saying, we have to do the thing we've never done before. And that really conscious deliberative change in practice. It's not going to be accidental, we have to choose to do the thing we've never done before. That was one really helpful takeaway. I also really like what she said about leadership. And that as school committee members, the onus is on us to really define a leadership path. But then she also used the word, you have to define equity and then over-communicate it. Over-communicate it. And I think that that's going to be important and it sort of goes back into the third part, which is this is going to have to be something that is, is deliberative, it's going to be hard, necessary conversations. Mary Beth, I also really like that she put necessary instead of difficult. But that is leaders, we have to do this and we have to build it into our everyday practice and not make it tokenism. Not make it like, oh, now we're going to do the special thing that's over here. So we can tick a box to say that we've done our special diversity thing. It has to be integrated into everything we do in a way we've never done before. Deliberatively, on purpose, with leadership and over-communicate it over and over. And that to me is the, those are the higher jingles that we have to keep in mind as we move forward.
Thanks, Anna. Dana?
A lot of what I, my takeaways have been said, but I did, she, it did really hit home the defined equity. I mean, she said that a lot of times and I really thought like, that's a useful and helpful thing to really think about. Defining it. And then I like what Anna just said about communicating it and over-communicating it. And, and, and then I, I did think, maybe one thing that maybe hasn't been really mentioned is that, that talking about culture and talking about it encompassing the intangibles. So like, you know, that, that idea that, you know, culture isn't just, what she sort of said. It's not just the holidays or the traditional food or whatever, that it's, it's deeper than that. And it goes to that understanding the heart and the mind of the child and like, and yourself, right? So, those are some of them.
Great. Julia?
Yes, so I love a good step-by-step. And, and what she said really seemed to me to be the stepping stones. She said, define equity for your district. Cultural proficiency is the tool that gets you there. So as leaders, we have to articulate a culturally proficient vision or a vision of equity. And then, again, reiterating what everyone else says, implicit bias is the work we have to do ourselves. And then my last takeaway that I really liked is the creating more ways to hear more voices. So, you know, there's more knowledge among us and it was just what you were saying, Mary Beth, with this child that had never been heard before. So looking for ways to really encourage children to bring their full selves into the classroom. Those are my, those are my takeaways.
Great. Thanks, Julia. David, you want to bring it home?
Um, yeah, I mean, although I don't, I feel somewhat left out because I, I didn't take active notes like the rest of these wonderful people. You know, I, I, I just think that, you know, the three things that I want to take away from this are, you know, I, I think the really re-emphasizing the necessity for this within our district. You know, loving the fact that we're seven voices or eight voices on the same, you know, on the same page for a change and utilizing that strength to move this forward. And, you know, really just looking with excitement, anticipation on figuring out what that first step is, right? It's, it's that one small, one small step, one giant leap, you know, type of deal. Because I think this is, it, it, it's separate of our overall plan, but it's also very, very much entwined with whatever our future plans sort of hold, right? So I did, I just think that those are three things I want to take from tonight.
Great. Thanks, David. And I think about, I don't know if folks know Simon Sinek's work, Start With Why, right? That, that if you're going to really move a culture or make a powerful change, that the first thing you have to do is convince people why it's important, right? Like, why, why is this work worth doing?
Yeah, don't you, I, like, I one, I'm wondering if our community, if we were to go out and say prioritize what you need, want for, to happen in the schools, if our community would put this on the list, right? But it may be that we need to sort of gauge with the community ones, but also help the community understand the importance at the same time. And I have heard anecdotally from lots of people about unkindness amongst children. And to me, this is sort of like the opposite of unkindness is accepting and, and being, understanding of all people and their perspectives. And so even though people might not articulate it as being a, it's a racist issue or there's a cultural, you know, anti-cultural issue. People might, might, if we can expand their ideas about what this is, might see it as a, as more of a priority than they do now, if we can get there.
I'd have been a term, Michelle, can I, can I sort of maybe add, add, add to that? In that, I don't think the question we need to ask the community is if this is something they want. I think this is something we ask the community, if this is something they'd like to be involved with in, with us, right? I think this is the proper step to take, I think that we voted for that, you know, earlier this year, that this is a direction we want the district to go in. And I don't think we necessarily need to seek approval of the community for this. But I do think it's something that we, you know, want to open, you know, and, and who knows where that, what that is right now, right? I, 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 you know, I could see sort of a, a one-hour training like this or, you know, overview sort of to our teachers as being a really great sort of thought provoker process to, to, to get a ball rolling in a, as a short-term answer, right? But I, I think that, you know, hopefully, I, there's, there's seven people, you know, here on tonight's meeting. You know, if we talked about, you know, hexagonal grid, there'd be 170, you know? And, and this is the work of the school committee, right? And, and, and here, and here we are again. You know, in, in, in.
Yeah, here we are again and we're all alone again.
Exactly, exactly what I, you know, and, and like, you know, and, and this is the stuff that when they're talking about the greatness of the program is us saying, okay, you know, there's a need for this within our district and there's an opportunity, you know, for us to improve our already, you know, from good to great. Something that Mike and I used to talk about with Hamilton one, right? A lot is you're looking at taking things from good to great. And, and, and I think that, you know, we, we like, you know, like you talked about your church, Michelle, and just talking about welcoming with opening arms, right? And I think that that's just a conversation we should push out to the community. Is, is not whether or not this, you know, would, is this on your scale of important things? Because it's a very important thing and we do plenty of things that are very important that we don't get permission, you know, from the community first. But at the same time, you know, it's like, do you want to be part of this? You know, what can we do for you guys? Can we, you know, have Dr. Wirth, or the tenor, or one of the other very many great speakers are out of this, you know? Have a community night, a forum, you know, where we can get the, you know, get her or someone else in here for an hour and a half and do a Zoom presentation, I think it'd be very powerful in our community, you know? And then we're a district of, of leaders, right?
Anna, then Dana, oh, Anna, Dana.
Thank you, Anna. I guess, I just want to say, I, I like, I, I think I see excitement from David about, and I feel the same way, that like, you know, we, we, I, I, we were all elected. We finally all agree on something. We passed the resolution back in the summer. I, I did, we didn't get, I'm going to say we got zero pushback. We got not a single person that wrote to us and said, I don't agree with that. We haven't made just about any other decision that we have gotten zero pushback on. So I think we have the thumbs up from the community that there isn't resistance. That we need to, we need to take the lead and say, okay, we're going with it. And, and I'm not 100% sure, and I don't, I mean, one of the things that Dr. Warnham actually said, which I loved, is she actually said, slow down to move fast. Or slow down to go fast. And that doesn't mean not to do a lot, but it does mean that we can take small, meaningful steps, like a deep step can be small. And that I'm excited that like, like, I love to engage a community and bring them in if they're ready to dive in. But I think, I don't know, we're good to move forward. And I love that, like, I love that we're ready to start really articulating what does this look like for our community? What does, you know, what does it, what's our vision? Like, that would be really cool, like, what can we dream of? If we really dreamed big, what would it be? What would it look like?
Yeah, I, I think about, you know, kind of the, the work of school committees and setting that vision, right? And then that, that comment about, you know, defining equity, right? And setting that this is what we mean by this work could be really powerful. Anna?
Thanks, Mary Beth. I think I'm going to choose my words really carefully. I think as much as I'm really encouraged and feel good about the fact that we're, we're all in agreement. I do, I, and, and I agree, actually, I, it's not that I think, it's that I know the community wants this and has wanted this and has been, if you listen carefully, especially to the voices of people who have been hurt, they've been begging for it for years. So before we get too, too excited about like, yay, we're finally doing something good, I would argue that there has been a lot of work in this in other ways and other places. And I'm mindful of a story, you know, from 20 years ago, where there was a middle school student named Hannah Roy, I think. And, you know, she tried to bring about the ADL No Place For Hate campaign here as a student. And she got shot down and it was a really ugly moment in the community. And that was, you know, 20 years ago. And so as much as I, I like the deliberative thoughtful process, I do feel a little bit compelled to say, this, this needs to happen now. The community is definitely ready. In some ways, the community and parts of the committee have been ready for, for decades. And I don't want our, I don't want to say, I don't want to get, I don't want to like curse the vibe, but at the same time, it's not, I'm not quite ready to pat myself on the back, to be honest. Yeah, like, this is, this is a starting point that's really overdue. And I think if you ask members of our community who've suffered at the hands of something in the district, they would say, where were you five years ago? Where were you two years ago? Where was this? You know, I think there's this sense of needing to recognize past hurt to try to make it better. I think that's part of it. But I think community, community is definitely ready. And I think kind of to what, I think David was saying is, you know, there's, we're the leaders of the community and sometimes we need to push things through and not, I don't, to me, this isn't a permission-seeking activity. I think that we've already pledged commitments to it, affirmed them. I would also argue, you know, you guys know how much I love to quote law and policy. But, you know, if you look at our documents, our policies, our handbooks, our yearbooks, like every piece of literature, I think the bottom of the, the bottom of the website, every letter, right? It says affirmatively, we are a district that does not discriminate, we are inclusive. Like, there's this very specific language that's woven into the fabric of educational policy. So in some ways, this isn't really about what anybody wants. This is what's about, we're doing what's right, right? And the high level of like, we need to correct the injustices of the last 400 years of European oppression. But we also are compelled to do this by federal law, you know? Like, we don't actually have, there is, there's no, there's no choice here because federal law compels us to do so, our moral compasses compel us to do so. The community is ready for it and has needed it for years. So I just sort of want to throw that out there, like, I wouldn't be too hesitant of stepping on toes in some ways because that's sort of the point, right? Like, we, what did she say? We have to do the thing we've never done before. And that's what we have to do. And I think we have a moral obligation to the community as, as the leaders of the district. But also legally, we're compelled, and just sort of as a, a point of, it's interesting, actually, listening to everybody talk about it. I think every single one in this group has done bias training and some work in this in our professional lives in some way or another, you know, going back decades, right? And in the community, I remember the first time we talked about bias training, the first night I motioned it, there is a woman in the community who said, oh, I do that for my HR, I'm an HR director, I do that all the time. Here, I'll give you access to the free LinkedIn platform, my company uses it. And I just feel like the fact that a lot of what we're talking about is, it's And I just feel like the fact that a lot of what we're talking about is, it's not just, do we, do we want it or do we need it? I mean, it's literally the required onboarding for every major institution, you know, professional nonprofits. So I feel like I I want to frame it in a way that seems palatable, but we also should recognize, like, there's no more waiting for permission to do the right thing. Like, I think we just have to move forward with these conversations. And um I think the community expects it of us, and I think they are ready, and I don't think that's a question at all. So I agree with everyone. We're, we are actually in agreement that this is something we have to do. And that's, that is exciting. Like, this is, this is a night of victory in some ways, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean it's good enough now. Like, now we have to get moving, so.
If if I could offer a couple of thoughts and i- in terms of some thinking about how to move forward. I know um that, you know, thinking about, you know, is there an articulated goal for next year and being really clear around that? And then, you know, what is the visioning work, you know, and the why, you know, starting with why for the community? And that definition of equity, really trying to refine that this year, e- e- even before setting a goal? I wonder if there'd be some value in, you know, having a standing agenda item each, you know, at each meeting or, you know, at least once a month, you know, targeted at defining what equity is for the community and in plans to push that out. And then working towards a real clear defined goal for the next school year that the district would work on to move this this process forward. It's just a a potential thought about how to best move forward. Um, I know it's it's hard to do a lot of that work tonight, but I think a process for how we how we figure out what's next would be an out, a good outcome for this evening. I don't know what people think about that.
I I wonder if if not to stretch us even even farther, but if a working group is needed.
Yeah.
I don't know what people think about that. I know we talked about a communications group.
I wonder if we could. I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I'm done.
I guess I wonder, again, I'm sort of gonna try to wonder to slow down a little bit before we like both of those suggestions seem reasonable to me, like both, um, but I kind of wonder if it's sort of like, I I wish that we had the bigger, like, I want the vision. Um, I'm a little hesitant about the working group only because I love that we, this is hard. It's difficult to have so many people. It is hard, and I wish that we could be sitting around a table because I know that this would be less stilted and and a better conversation, but um so I'm hesitant to, I I guess I want to sort of slow things down. I not, I I I love the idea of really getting a clear vision, and I don't know if we can do that by splitting up. And I also, I like Mary Beth, I'm I'm like, so like, I feel like there's a thing there that's close.
It's not quite there yet. Keep working on it, Dana, I guess.
Like, I I like having it on every agenda, but I feel a little bit like it's still dividing it out, putting it as a separate. And I don't know how to fix that. I don't know, like, I want it to be sprinkled through the entire agenda, and I don't know how to make that happen, but um. Yeah, but I I I would really like us, I dream of being able to really answer the question. You know, if if in your dreams, in your vision, what would equity look like in a living, breathing classroom? Like, what would it look like in a kindergarten classroom? What would it look like in an eleventh grade, you know, physics class? Like, I would like to really answer that question, and maybe other people, that's not the direction people want to go, but I, that's kind of, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, I just quickly, I think a lot about seeing here data, like, what would you see, what would you hear in an environment like that? But Julia, oh, and then Anna, or Anna, you want to start?
Yeah, Anna, you had your hand up first.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Joy. Um, I think I feel similar to Dana um in not wanting to separate into a working group. Um, I think actually this has been really productive to have all this uh hearing and seeing the same thing. So I'm worried about bifurcating levels of knowledge, which we already have some of that within the group. And then if the working groups are like, I think this is a really important conversation holistically. So I do think this needs to be more of all of us together. Um, I think for me, the goals in some ways, I do feel like we've defined them a little. And again, I guess I I just, I feel like we don't, we don't have to be quite so afraid of starting. I personally would recommend that, you know, the the anti-racism resolution really does have, and again, this is, that was put together by our governing body, by people who've sort of amassed the collective knowledge of a lot of school committees about past practice and other districts. So I'm, I take comfort in the way it was framed, knowing that the people who framed it sit in the same seats that we do, if that makes sense. It wasn't put together by some other outside bodies, put together by locals. And, you know, I feel like within that, there are very clear steps that we've that we have resolved to, you know? We've resolved to providing annual professional development training. We've resolved to committing and recruiting, retaining into our workforce. We'll examine our policies and for institutional systemic racialized practices, we'll incorporate the curriculum. If you just look at the resolution as sort of a base plate of like, these are the goals that not only we affirmed, but in some ways, our governing body has affirmed too. And I take some comfort in that, and I think they're good. I remember when we first passed the resolution thinking, wow, this is really strong and awesome. And it was, so I I think I personally would recommend that we use that as sort of a goal setting framework and then pick out from it. Instead of trying to do everything all at once, because there's no capacity for that at any level, choose the ones that seem most elemental. And again, I I am a broken record, and she said it again tonight, we have to start with that inherent bias, right? That intrinsic bias literally is a starting point. So I do think that to me seems like a really palatable goal to offer that that training. And Dave, I like your idea of maybe actually somehow they're making it more open partnering. I will tell you, the Human Rights Coalition is talking about doing that, like, this is something that could be done for the community, but I think it has to be done for the schools. But the other thing too is, you know, Dr. Warham is here, there are tons of educational advisors. I do think maybe as another starting point is to invite in a true expert to say, look, this is where we're starting. This is our starting point, based on their experience and what's going on in the world, what would they advise? Not in a generalized MAS C training, but really looking at our district, looking at those those data points that she talked about, looking at the demographics, looking at the fact that, you know, our equity page on our website literally says like, to be continued or coming soon, you know, like, I think there are professionals we could tap into, and I think it would be well worth our time to reach out to someone to do that. I know Beverly has just hired a university officer, but there are tons of resources. And I think that would be time and money well spent to actually have someone come in and give us a little bit of guidance from their past experience. Because um we do not have to reinvent the wheel here. We really don't. I don't, I think we can learn. There's a benefit, I guess, to being late to the party, because we can learn from other people that have already done this. And I think that's that's comforting and should help make this more efficient, so. I don't know, I think the goals have already sort of been defined. I do think defining equity would be an important part of that, but I do, I I would want to keep us all together, all seven. I'd like to get a little bit of professional guidance, and I do think strongly that that implicit bias training is something that should be part number one. Like, that seems like a clear advisable stepping stone.
Julia?
No, I absolutely agree. Um, and would second that we, I don't think we made a motion, but I would agree that we definitely need to do some more training and we need to focus on the goals and not reinvent the wheel. My only question, just as a new school committee member, is what is our purview and what is the superintendent's purview? So do we like set the vision and the goals and then um the, you know, the leadership team actually implements? I'm just, I I want to know what we are responsible for, what and um what we're asking others to do. But I do think we, I love the idea of using the goals that we've already set.
Yeah, I I would, I would offer on that, Julia, that, you know, vision is clearly the, in the wheelhouse of the school committee, right? That we're, we're, where is it important that we head as a district? Um, so that visioning of, you know, this this question and this conversation around equity, I I I think is spot on in terms of this, the school committee. Um, and to to have annual goals that may include something like, you know, like um uh certain types of training, where then what I would say is then you would hand that off and say, it's really critical that this type of training occurs. Um, and, you know, one of the things we're in the process of doing is setting up a professional development committee. Um, and then what we would do is pass that on to the professional development committee. This has been a a a goal that has been set for us. Um, and hopefully, and, you know, part of um that buy-in process. Again, I I go back to that thinking about starting with why, you know, there's a, there's a freighter phrase around, if you're leading, if you're leading and nobody's following, you're just out for a walk. Um, and, you know, ensuring that 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 collectively we're communicating why this is important. You know, why we're headed, where we're headed. And and I could foresee a lot of work that for the remainder of this school year focused on getting that message out. And at the same time, you know, to your point, you know, the the resolution has a lot of great action steps. But for twenty one, twenty two, where is it that we want to focus? You know, and if we could end the year with a community conversation about why this work is important um and a set of articulated goals for twenty one, twenty two, that I think that really puts us in a good position. And then that allows, you know, me to go to this professional development committee and say, here you go, guys. Here's the plan, talking with our leadership team around, okay, how do we move whatever it is that comes out, I think makes a lot of sense. Anna?
Well, I think too, and you can probably answer this better than me, I mean, this is one important goal, but I like the idea of we've expressed this as a value set, something that we as a district care about. But in terms of actually working it into the other types of training that the district needs, um, you know, this isn't the only thing teachers need or want professional development on. Like, it is an important goal. It should not be the focus of every PD opportunity. So I like the idea of us providing an overarching framework, but then letting, and and I think to Julia's question, again, I'm also kind of a new member, but I think that would be in keeping with we set a vision of like, these are the things that are important, but then giving our teachers who, you know, are magnificent in their own ways to help them help allow them to self define and be like, okay, well, these are the things that we think we could do, and there can be a conversation around that. But I also think, you know, it's worth saying, I I I think just like there are a whole bunch of teachers that took it upon themselves to do the trauma informed trading, right? I know Mary Adamic talked about that. I mean, I'm sure there are teachers, in fact, I know that there are teachers who have done some of this work that would help be leaders. So I think recognizing we have some talent already within our teaching pool and some ideas, it's, again, this is not new ground. And I I know the teachers are doing this and talking about it. So I like the idea of us establishing hiring goals and then helping put it into bite sized pieces that you, Mary Beth, and the professional development team could have sort of help figure out. When is the right time? We know we need to do it, but work it into other things, because this isn't the only project in the district right now. It's very important, but it's not the only one, so.
Yeah, if I, maybe just in terms of trying to get to a good end place for for this evening, what does it feel like if we took, you know, March, we we are continuing to do the budget and there's a lot going on there. But if we dedicated April for um specific places on the agenda to really get clear on what the district's definition is of equity um and get that that published and the committee agreeing on what that is and maybe how we push that out as an as a an April goal and as a May goal um going through and starting a draft of twenty one, twenty two goals um and then confirming them in June, so that the the year ends with the district having a clearly articulated definition of equity that has been communicated to the the community at large. And it has one of its twenty one, twenty two goals already written um that relates to how we move this work forward. Does that seem to make sense to folks? Oh, Dana, sorry. Dana, Peter, sorry, Peter.
I don't know whether David was making, I'm speaking to that, but I don't know whether you were waiting, David.
No, I mean, I, what I was gonna say was that, you know, let's not get caught up in the bureaucracy of trying to solve it tonight, right? I I think that we need to, I think that we should sit back. I I I do know that March is, and I was gonna sort of suggest that we try and bring back what our goals look like and putting on the agenda for April, right? But I I do like how you just sort of laid it out, Mary Beth. My my only sort of caveat to that would be, I think, right? So li- like Anna said, this isn't everything, but like Dana said, this should be sprinkled into everything, right? So the and and it's not going to happen overnight, right? So so I I I, you know, is there a way that we can get some sort of overview training, like an hour long type of PD into to our teachers this year, looking into, you know, potentially doing, whether it's over the summer, doing a longer break or some, you know, early in the year PD um of sort of bringing that in so that, you know, because every time, you know, I've gone through this multiple times, and it's gone through, every time you go through this, you sort of hear something different and see a new avenue that you can bring it in, and that's the ultimate goal. Excuse me, I Harry Pullman May, and I I don't know if it's just me or if Michelle gets as nervous as I do, but like, that's when I see transition in our team. So like, sort of trying to create these plans when we could have new members onboarding and all this, um, always makes me a little bit nervous. Um, just because you don't want to ruin a good flow. You know, but I I like, I do like the timelines. I don't want to be, I don't want to be negative on that, but I I also want to, you know, um, you know, the hurry up to the slow down to hurry up type of thing too, like, you know, can can we dip, you know, sort of dip our toe a little bit as a district in a little bit this year to get that process started, right? And then like Anna said, there's already going to be people in in the district that are already on board with this, that have already done, you know? And there are some that are that maybe sort of don't have a negative view, but like, eh, why do we really need this? And I was gonna be like, oh, you know what? That was really insightful, you know, and I'm I'm happy, it it was not a waste of an hour, right? And uh, we've all been in those PDs before. But like the, you know, and then sort of moving that forward where, you know, yeah, I love the idea of sort of creating uh the overarching plan for the future of our district, right? But realizing that it's, you know, um, it's the sprinkles here, right? That that's sort of adding everything to make everything more robust. There are, you know, definite needs like, um, you know, or addressed in in our little Q and A right there that, you know, we want to make sure that we're not, that that things like that is not happening, right? And and um you'd like to think those are the easier fixes, but if they were really that easy to fix, it would have never happened in the first place. But, you know, something that we have to actually, you know, sort of keep in mind, so like, the the faster you can get started, I think the better off we are, but at the same time, like, not just sort of, um, you know, needing, thinking that we need to solve the entire problem right away too, right? So like, I I know it's sort of, it seems like it right at the fence a little bit, um, but, you know, I I would just like to see that. But like I said, I really did like how you laid it out, other than my worry about the transition of the team. Um, but I did like how you laid it out, Mary Beth. Thank you, Dana. That's really what I was thinking.
Thank you. That was, I thought that was really helpful. I'm, I have wondering a couple of things. One, I I liked that very much of the plan, and I I'm hearing a couple of like David and Anna, I think, and maybe Julia, all kind of suggested in different ways that we might need to reach outside of our community. And I'm wondering, and it's really a question for the group, like, what do we think would be a useful reach out? Like, what do, what feels like the first, like, I heard Anna sort of saying there are other communities that have already done this, like, I'm just wondering, what would that, what would feel useful? Like, I have an idea about maybe, but I'm interested, do other people feel like that would be a useful thing to do? Because we could do that, like, that's something we could do that's outside of a meeting, right? Some, you know, we could reach out if there's a connection, and I'd be interested whether people have ideas about who that would be. have ideas about who that would be and how that would work.
Well, I, um, I mean, I, I definitely think that is an idea, just to help give us some focus if we feel like we need it, which again, I think could be helpful. Um, and I think, you know, this is where, and I don't know if this, this works in terms of like process, but you know, I have a couple of ideas of specific people that might be good. Obviously the MASC has great trainers, you know? I mean, Dr. Warham was one of the people there tonight, that like, there's a whole, there's a whole division of MASC that's sort of working on this. So again, like I'm looking for, we don't have to create it. We, we can ask for the help from the people who have already figured it out. So I guess for me, I might reach out to say, could we leverage our professional body who has worked on some of this to give us some, you know, tactical guidance about next steps that they might suggest? And then um, I do feel like just in terms of workflow, I think the idea of, of defining concrete steps that are manageable, so we don't overwhelm the district. But also, um, you know, the way you're talking about integrating into everyday life, I do think the sooner we start doing this and start working on some of the, the, the trainings and the, the mental internal shift, it's amazing what happens when you, um, and a lot of people today talk about being anti racist, right? Like how do you, and she talked about tonight, like how do you train yourself to do that? And at first it's uncomfortable, but then once you practice, all of a sudden, now you see the world totally differently and it just becomes second nature. So the same way that the biases built up to be hurtful, anti racist techniques, they also become second nature if you actually work on it. And it's, it's, I mean, it's totally trainable. Like it's great to think that at age 29, for the 14th time, I'm learning new things, right? You know, like that's, I think that's really awesome. So, yeah, I think a little bit of PD for, for us, from someone who has led school committees down this path before. I think that'll be helpful. I think it'll be efficient. I think it will also potentially help us avoid conflicts amongst ourselves about what to do, because people have done it before and I think we can take some advice from them. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but that would be my step is get some help from someone who knows. Look at other modeling and then talk with Mary Beth and the teachers about what's a palatable, reasonable ask with, but I do agree with David, obviously, like I wanted to do this years ago. For me, I'm like, let's go, let's go. I was sort of like, Julia, I just, we can't move fast enough for me. So if anything, I'm going to be like the rabbit that wants to go really too fast. So I recognize that in myself. That would be my suggestion for next steps.
So I know we're at time now for nine. Does, does it feel like we'll, we'll move? I think I heard that it would, that the timeline here makes at least as a place to start to have April be that equity conversation, um, May and June with the goals. I heard some additional training for the school committee around, um, you know, potential speakers or that type of thing that could be looked into. And you know, one of the things that we've, we've already started, we, we met with the, the community group that Anna, I know you're leading some, some of the students that are involved in that. And talked about training for the staff. You know, one of the things that, that I shared with them and Principal Tracy joined me is that right now people's bandwidth are, is pretty narrow. Um, and one of our teachers who I, I noticed is on here, Heather Masses, de- developed a survey to ask people when they feel like they're going to be best prepared just to really engage in this week, this work, either this spring over the summer or the fall. So she's planning on sending that out that week, this week. Um, and you know, we have so, we're making some assumptions about people's bandwidth, but we don't know until we ask, right? So the next step there would be to get some information from our faculty around, do they feel like this is something that they can really be present for this year? Or over the summer or in the fall? What's the best time for them to really start this work? So, you know, can certainly report back on the um, results of those surveys. Does that, does that feel like a, a good way to kind of close and figure out next steps? Uh, Peter?
I just have one question. In fact, um, at my school, a new club was just formed and it's, it's starting um, on March 1st. It's a diversity, equity and inclusion club run by students.
Nice.
Teachers and students. And I don't know if we have something like that or could encourage something like that in our school.
Yeah, actually, there, there's one both within the high school and then a community group as well. So. Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Well, thank, oh Dana, did you want to finish?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I guess I, um, and maybe this is, this is, I'm gonna throw it out there, because I guess I'm wondering if, if what we're looking for, for us, when we're talking about what we're looking for, I'm wondering if what we're looking for is maybe not so much of a training, but maybe a facilitator? To now, to help to, that we could maybe go to the MASC and, and say, we're in agreement about wanting to take the resolution that we had and put it into action. And we're enthusiastic, but we know this has already been done before. And is there, so I, I, I'm just putting that out there. Is, is that what we're looking for? Is a facilitator to help us get the process rolling? Rather than like necessarily training.
I agree. I heard from David, training. I agree from, that I heard from Anna, facilitator. I think that those two things go hand in hand. I mean, is that kind of, David, I, I also heard you saying more about like community training, but um.
Well, no, I mean, I, I think that I, 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 there's people out here who've done this before, who have done it in very similar communities. Let's go find that person and have them walk us through it rather than wasting our time, you know?
That's, and that's what I meant about this school specific focus. Like, I mean, clearly the MASC has people that, I do. I think maybe, Mary Beth, to your point about a structured facilitated conversation. Yeah, not so much like we attend to training as anonymous people, but we have someone specifically come work with our committee who's led this process before. And yeah, just to pick back up on Mary Beth said, you know, um, there are community groups. You know, our group is one. There's a couple of other regional groups that are doing some similar programming outside of the schools that I'm sure members of the population in the community will hopefully attend. But I think that it's also really important to, to, to sort of own this, right? Like we are still the public schools or the school committee. We have public tax dollars. These are publicly funded things. So I think that bridge is really solid. I mean, it's nice that there's a lot of people that wear different hats here. You know, Michelle, you've got ties to the church. I've got ties to the, the coalition. You know, David's got ties to, like, we all have different ties. Michelle is at Accord, you know, like we all have tons of community ties that I think we could go to in some ways or make aware. But ultimately for me, as a, I guess as a value proposition, we're the elected school committee for the public schools and we have this responsibility to the public. And it has to be on us. Like we have to drive this particular part of the bus as it pertains to the district. And I do think, Peter, yeah, I mean, there's, there's an awesome group of students right now that is blows me away. Like the kids are doing such great work. But again, we can't rely on the kids. Like we're supposed to be the leaders. And that's okay to say that too, but it's partnerships. But I do think we have to take leadership. So yeah, I think if, if people are open to bringing in someone from the MASC or someone they recommend to a meeting in April or May or whatever timeline seems good, you know, moving forward. I, to me, that feels like a really good next step, because they'll help us figure out the next step after that.
Right. I'm not sure, but I think we might have a plan.
The only thing we don't have is we, I think we do actually need to sort of say, who is going to do, make that phone call, I think? Cause all of us can't.
Yep.
So.
Michelle Horgan is our call, call the MASC person. So I think it's her.
Excellent. I didn't know we had that.
I'm on it.
My comment, if you give her a, them a call, she does.
Will do.
All right. So why don't we adjourn? I do want to just make people aware that um, we have a meeting on the third. We have a meeting on the 10th. And we will be having a meeting on the 17th, which I think the 17th is going to be the workshop. It was. Things are looking up for the budget. We may be able to prove it on the 10th. The 17th was a placeholder. So it looks like, hopefully we won't need it for approving the budget. Um, so we'll see if we can get workshop in there about goals and um, Mary Beth's um, do more, Mary Beth's formative thing, because we had missed that. So. So just keep.
We definitely have a meet on the third, yes?
Yeah.
Third, 10th and 17th. Yep.
Um, and just before I move too far away from the takeaway, so Michelle's going to reach out to the MASC and then Mary Beth is working with Heather Mace to, about the survey and bandwidth. That seemed like another hard, actionable takeaway that we'll maybe circle back to. I just want to make sure that's, those are sort of the two main things, right? I know Dana really well, was like, what's the action step? And I think those look like two actual things we just agreed to. So that's.
And when was the definition of equity? I love that when you said that, Mary Beth.
Yeah, I have that down for the April school committee meetings. So I think, you know, we could do a draft in the first meeting and then finalize it the second meeting of April. Um, and then we will be in the range of starting to define 21, 22 goals in May and June. So this would be one of them. Um, and again, that gives us uh, the time to do both drafts and a final version before the end of the school year.
Thank you.
And I, I think there, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm just.
No, go ahead Dana and then Michelle.
No, I, I just think it's really, it, it will be important to get to that point of over communication. Like it is a really important and difficult thing for the community to understand that like when we set a goal for the district, that's a big deal. Like we will need to communicate that to the district that like, it's, it's not just like, oh, they said that, right? Like it's.
Yeah, I think one of the things Dana, that can be really helpful. I have a number of colleagues that actually start every school committee meeting with reading the district goals. Here's what we decided that we were going to do this year. You know, this is what we're focused on. And it does help remind everybody, this is the work that we're engaged in. So that, I would agree with that. Michelle, did you have a?
Yeah, just to um, clarify um, the date. So we're looking probably possibly for March to have some type of training facilitator to come in and help us with our um, resolution.
April.
Well, April, we had talked about the, I wonder just in terms of thinking, and you, you may want to do this earlier, but there is a workshop scheduled in June for like June 16th. Would that be a time to block off a substantial part of that workshop day? Or time or a piece of that to have a consultant? Or would you prefer to have somebody in in the meetings?
Can I, can I, can I, though, if we're going to be setting our goal on equity in April, would it be better for us to have a, a training or facilitator come in before that? I, I think it's good anytime, but I'm just saying before we set that goal.
Probably, yeah. And we were thinking, so April would be just the definition of equity. So maybe in alignment with that, having somebody come in in April before they actually work begins. Does that make sense?
Well, and if, if I can offer, I feel like the defining of what equity looks like is not the same as what are we going to do to move our district to being a more DEI focused district? So I think defining equity feels like something we could do before we have another person come in to advise around actually then making that actualize. Cause I think just based on everything we've said tonight, I think we could come up with, I think, I think, I think we could do that ourselves, but then how to turn that goal into action is the part I think we could use some help with. So I'm okay doing the goal setting in like first part of April, but maybe, you know, I don't want to wait till you, and that feels too long to me. I think if we could get some consultancy in later in April or early May, that would feel good to me personally.
I'll reach out, find out what's available and we can report back at the next meeting.
All right. So just one final recap. April will look at ending that month with a clearly defined definition of equity to share with our community. May, there would be a consultancy, first draft of goals. And June, finishing um, the, the 21, 22 goal related to DEI. Um, and then again, Heather is taking the lead on the staff survey, but we'll report back as to what we find when that goes out. What do you think? Plan?
Dana?
Oh, am I moving to adjourn? I wanted to stay with you guys.
Like I said, it's not 1:00 AM. We can't do it.
I moved to adjourn.
Second. Anna. And Michelle Horgan's on the bottom of the screen.
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Either.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, Bailey, yes. Right. See you next Wednesday.
Have a good night, everybody.